All right, time's six o'clock, so we're gonna start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Bernie, what'd you do?
Right out there.
We used to do that during COVID.
Really?
I wonder what happened?
It's right over there.
So I'm gonna undo this, but you're gonna have to tell me.
Sorry, kids, we cleaned the carpets.
That's a first.
What, put them back?
So the eagle's facing.
You good?
Pledge of Allegiance, the United States of America, to your father for which it stands, on my nation, on my God, in this one, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the first meeting of the 2024 to 2025 school year, so welcome, everybody. It's August 12th, and we'll start with Mac Mary.
Good morning, or good morning, oh my gosh, it's August, everyone. Just wanted to acknowledge we had a successful extended school year this summer. I'm sure Corinne Brens would share out that they did a great job as well over at Fall School, but in terms of special education students, we serve probably over 200 students. You see in the update a picture of some of our students at the Early Learning Center, some children over at Martin School, rising student up at the middle school, and then our young adult program who actually made thank you gratitude bags for professionals that worked this summer. So we had a very successful extended school year program, and then we continue to work with educators. We have offered 16 two-hour workshops. We have close to 200 staff that took advantage of our summer workshops to be prepared for the new IEP documentation that every district in the Commonwealth will be utilizing come the new school year. So we're really trying to alleviate adult anxiety for this big change that's to come in terms of the IEP documentation. Those are my two quick updates.
I'm gonna move on to Michelle, but I wanted to say hi to you all first. I think this is your first full meeting with us, so.
Second, maybe.
I don't think you talked last time.
I didn't. You might not talk this time either.
Stop calling on you. No, kidding. Welcome. Well, go to Michelle.
Okay, thank you. As we spoke about at the end of the last school year, one of our big focus areas for the upcoming school year is to really work on addressing bullying across all of our schools, but also any types of negative behavior. And we've been talking a lot as a leadership team about how we're going to do that in the upcoming school year, so you'll hear me speak about this quite a bit during the upcoming school year. In the meantime, though, this past spring, we convened a committee, our social emotional learning committee represents teachers from across the district, some of our leadership team members, and a wide range of specialists. So you might have an occupational therapist, our nurse leader. So we really brought together an impressive team of people, and Sarah Stone actually volunteered on that team as well. And we decided to do a major overhaul of what was formerly known as the Respectful Culture Initiative bully prevention and intervention plan. And this was a document that existed and was created in 2010. Every couple of years, we review it and update it, but it hasn't had a major overhaul since it was originally written. And we definitely felt like with the increase in people being concerned about behaviors at the schools and the talk about bullying that came up last year, that it would be a good time to revise the plan. So you have a copy of it in your backup. It's not something that requires a vote, but I thought it would be really beneficial to talk about it here because it's been something a lot of people have been asking about. I think the revision does a lot of things, and I'll talk through a few of those things. One of the big things that it does is it builds alignment across our whole school district. While we had this plan, over time, people start to, you know, lose sight of, oh, I investigate this way. Oh, I use this procedure. Why I investigate? So we really wanted to get back down to basics, create a flow chart of exactly how every administrator would investigate any situations that are reported. So we created a new incident reporting form, and I did put paper copies in front of you of the old forms. As you're gonna see, a lot of the information is very similar. We also consulted with our lawyer. This first incident form, the old version has notes about IEPs and other things on it. And really, this is meant to be a front-facing document that any person can use to report bullying. So we really wanted to revamp this so it doesn't feel like a tracking sheet, doesn't have any identifiable information about students that we wouldn't want anyone to have. So this is going to become, it is already a digital form, and it's available through our website so that anytime anyone wants to report an incident, they can report it directly. Another important thing that we changed, there was a question that said, if yes, have incidents occurred before? And there was a misunderstanding that some people thought it had to be the same type of incident or the exact same people involved. We felt like that might lead us to miss something in the process. So we're allowing families to elaborate on that if they're the ones reporting, so that they can say, well, it wasn't the exact same type of incident, but something like this has happened between these two students in the past. We also got clarification that it can be a group of students. So this time, you know, John may be considered the aggressor in the report, but the next time it might be Gil. And so if that group of students as a group is targeting someone, we can also deem that as bullying. So one of the great things about our legal counsel is she is incredible at doing training as well. So while we worked through all of the new documents, she actually came in last week and did a three-hour training with our entire leadership team. So we've all been trained in the best investigation practices, how to use the flow chart correctly. We did practice sessions where we talked about, you know, what would best practice be if this situation came up. She talked specifically about if a group of students are considered aggressors against a student, how that could be handled. We talked a little bit about discipline procedures and how to document things properly. So on the front of training, while that doesn't really change the forms, we've done a lot of calibrating with our entire team, and we thought that was especially helpful. We're also creating a webpage on the North Auburn School's website. It's going to be specifically dedicated to bullying. We're creating a short five-minute video that's going to be really user-friendly for students and parents. It's going to go on that webpage. And then this full document is going to be broken down in sections so that parents can find resources easily. There'll be a separate button with the reporting form right there, so you'll literally go to the NA Schools page, and if you want to find anything about reporting a behavior, reporting an incident, or anything about our bullying plan, it will all be in one place. And that reporting form will be a Google form, and it will literally go right to the school principal at whatever school the person reports it, which is a procedure we already had in place, but people said, oh, on Community Schools' website, it might be in a different place than on Martin Schools' website. So we're gonna make all of those things streamlined and really consistent across the board. And then on the back end of everything, we've looked into our student reporting system. It's called Aspen. It tracks attendance and all kinds of other things. Up until now, we've had a reporting mechanism that's basically been paper copies or maybe like a Google form that a principal might share with another principal, but we haven't necessarily had things follow students up through the system. Now we are going to be creating what's called an Aspen workflow. The workflow will be specifically for bullying, and the principals will actually, every time they have a bullying report, any type of incident, they'll log it in, and they'll follow a specific workflow that guarantees us that they're all following those same steps that are in the workflow. And then that reporting mechanism names who the aggressor was, whether or not there was bullying found or not found, and it would be able to follow. It doesn't become a punishment of any kind for the student, but it's in the file, so that when a fifth-grade student advances up to middle school, we now have the ability to say, okay, these two students may have had a conflict before. Maybe it wasn't bullying, but if we don't know that background information, sometimes it's hard to really make a good and fair determination in different situations. So really, everything we've done is building on the plan from 2010, but really thinking about how can we improve it, make it more modern, and ensure that everything's being investigated and tracked through that process that I mentioned. I know the document is a long document, but we really felt, we wanted to highlight a lot of the positive things that our district is doing in terms of our new social emotional learning program, a lot of the things that the high school does in terms of clubs and activities and building inclusivity, the middle school programs that promote inclusivity there. So there's a whole page of things that are specific, more positive actions that we're taking in the district in addition to just taking the whole behavior, bullying, all types of conflict seriously in this coming school year. Also, we'll be doing some parent training sessions that we're gonna make available throughout this year, because we feel like it's important to have our parents and families really be part of the process, too. That was a lot of me talking, but I know some people may have questions. Hopefully, that helps to answer some of them.
I asked to have the old forms printed out just so that you can compare them, because they don't look visually very different, but when you really read through the content, it is very different. I have a couple just little nitpicky feedback pieces.
And I'm still taking feedback, so this isn't final-final. We want to roll it out before school starts, but if any of you have feedback even after tonight, please send it my email.
Yeah, there's just a couple wording things that I think were probably intended in a certain way, but they read differently to fresh eyes. So if anybody sees stuff like that, please just send it along.
Send them a line, it'd be helpful.
The first page, that incident reporting form, is meant to be the one that parents would see and families would use, so I really want to make sure that one's especially user-friendly. On the back end, the tracking side of things, the principals kind of know what they need to put in some of those sections, but I put it in here as a sample form, just so you have the whole, all three parts.
Great. Does anyone have questions?
Michelle, if you could just go through, I know, like, I know, but for parents who might be here or watching at home, what are the steps? So say a kiddo comes home and they're upset, and this isn't the first time it's happened, like, what's the first thing a parent does?
Absolutely. So a parent can do a couple of different things. We've tried to make it really easy, and our flow chart actually is really helpful because it just outlines everything. If a parent or even a student wants to report bullying, they can access that incident report form that will be on, that is on every school's webpage, but also it'll be on that bullying page that I mentioned. If the person does not feel comfortable filling out a form, they can report it to any staff member at school, and we purposely built in to our opening day training with staff to notify all staff members that if they take a report of bullying, even if it's a verbal report, it's their responsibility to ensure that the form gets filled out and that it's reported to the principal. So we built that in in step one. That way, if a parent wants to report it, but just wants to pick up the phone and call the school, or meet with their individual teacher, if a child wants to report it, they have those options, and eventually that form will be filled out by school personnel if the parent or student doesn't feel comfortable filling it out themselves. From there, it's always reported to the principal or the principals designate. In some cases, our assistant principals are the ones who do the majority of the investigating. That person will take the information from the incident report. They're going to interview the person who reported bullying first, so they want to always talk to the target, hear the whole story, hear the background. Are there other situations like this that have happened, and just understand the context of the issue? Then they're going to record where those date, time, incident pieces all happened, so that factual piece. We need to always determine if it happened on school grounds, if it's cyberbullying, things like that. Once they've gone through that process, then they're going to interview any witnesses as well so that we can gather additional information. We recently were trained on what types of questions to ask, not asking leading questions, but really just trying to get to the bottom of an issue, because we always hear more than one side of a story, especially when students are reporting things. And then during that process, the principal will also be contacting the parent or guardian of the person who reported the bullying in case they're not aware of the situation, and also the alleged aggressor's family. That way, they know that it's being investigated, and then they can follow up afterwards and talk through, does that other student need support? Do we need education for a student? Things like that. At the conclusion of all of the interviews, the principal is going to call back the people involved and make sure there's a follow-up piece to it as well. We added that documentation to the final form so that we can continue to follow, rather than just always being to bullying and case closed kind of a thing. So we've got more of a process of following through with families and then following back up with students to how things are going afterwards. If it is found to be bullying, we are going to be following our student handbook procedures for punishments and any type of consequences. So not all cases are a situation where we would suspend a student. Not all cases would we give a detention. Sometimes we find out, you know, it's a younger student, they really didn't know, you know, they weren't supposed to do something. Sometimes it's education, sometimes it's counseling or other supports for students. So we're gonna look at it really holistically, and of course, that consequence piece is a part of it. So we're going to be linking the handbook in as well, so parents can literally follow along and see, we follow consequences in a fair and appropriate manner. And we can't say back to a family, this is the consequence I assigned to someone, but we can let you know that there is going to be a follow-through, and this was the finding that we found at the end of the investigation. If there's anything that needs to be reported to the police, we also have looped them in as well, and they're super responsive. We have our student resource officer who is direct connection, so we always inform them if it's something that rises to that level. And actually, it's really the documentation piece and our new workflow, and Aspen is going to allow us to do that and follow cases more specifically and make sure all parts of the process have been followed. And then if there's any follow-up in terms of these two kids can't be in the same class, we've got to split them up at recess. The principal also has a step now where they would go back and follow up with teachers and staff members who may work with these students if it's appropriate.
Awesome. Thank you. And just one question, this one just came to me, because I know you and I have gone back and forth a few times. My god, sorry. Here in my ears. If a parent makes a report to a staff member who's not the principal, and then that staff member goes to the principal and the principal puts together the report, does the parent then, like, get a copy of that report, or at least like a, like a, yes, we got it, like, we're starting to handle it kind of thing, just so they know it didn't get lost with that staff member?
Yes, 100%. We also built in a fail-safe that within one school day of receiving the report, the principal will follow back up with the parent to let them know they have the report and they're conducting the investigation. And there's also a final step that was something, not all principals were aware of, but we're really tightening this part up, that they will issue a letter with findings in it at the end of the full investigation. So in every case, they'll also get that findings letter at the end. So that's a couple of pieces we've tightened up now.
Awesome. And finally, I just want to say thank you to Michelle, Meg, John, and everyone that's been involved in this, because I think it's something that a lot of families are craving, that they're feeling like it's really needed. Certainly, I have my own personal experience with being, you know, the effects of bullying on a student, but I just want to say thank you, because I think it, I think it really was needed, and I'm, you know, I'm happy that we've taken these steps to start to kind of handle it a little bit better as a full district.
I think it's a great example of us just really listening to the community. We're hearing people that have concerns about this. We really want to be responsive to that this whole year. You know, as things are going on, we're gonna continue to work through the plan and continue to make it better.
Awesome. Thank you.
Can I just reiterate, Michelle and her team did an unbelievable job on this, and you'll see even that the final plan is kind of branded a little bit, and it feels like a lot of our documents that we're producing, so thank you. But I just want to say, too, I mean, we're not alone here in North Auburn with dealing with this. It's, you know, post-COVID especially, if you talk to other schools, I mean, people are really struggling with student behavior. I'd say parent behavior, too, by the way. It's a challenge. And so it was time, certainly it's time for everybody, but it was really time for us to do this calibration, to use the word Michelle used, and also just a commitment to it. We're talking to our principal, we have a meeting, a full-day leadership team meeting tomorrow, but we're talking about even how to roll it out to parents, whether it's an open house, whether it's newsletters, whether it's all of those things, to say like, you know, kind of be prepared. Like, this might look different, this might feel different. It's not just bullying, it's just any negative behavior. It's time to tamp it down. I think the kids deserve it. They sort of need to be recalibrated, too, but just in general, we want to make sure our kids feel emotionally safe in our schools at all times. And I'll also say, though, this is probably gonna ruffle feathers. You know, I've talked to you guys about this a lot, but we've never had a parent who's just taken a, taken discipline and said, thank you, right? I mean, so, you know, we, we're committed to this. We need to stop the negative behavior. We need to stop the bullying. But we all need to be on the same page, too, that this recalibration's gonna lead to some angst about disciplinary consequences, too. We can't have it both ways, right? So I think it's great work. We're really excited about it. The video that Michelle alluded to is the same, it's that animated, the short animated series Cartoon EDU. It's the same one we have for our four Ls, our safety and security training, our MSBA videos, and now this will be part of that family of videos. And so, again, part of the, part of the brand, but also part of the feel. This is, it's ripe for just being kind of part of our culture, I think, moving forward. So anyway, great job, Michelle. Yeah.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys. Lots of questions. I had two quick questions. Is it gonna be published in additional languages other than English?
Yes.
Okay. And then my next question was, how do you determine what rises to the level of a police report?
If there was anything that was considered to be criminal activity. Also, same thing, we're mandated reporters, so if anything overlapped into reporting to DCF, we would do that as well. And sometimes we just run a case by our school resource officer just to let them know, you know, this felt like something more than, you know, a single incident, and just kind of see where they're at with it. Primarily, a lot of times, if parents feel really upset about something, they may also choose to go to the police themselves, which we always tell them, they could do that and report it themselves as well.
Would you notify parents before you go to police, or would, obviously, if it's a horrific incident that requires police response, that's different, but if it's something that you can delay, would you let them know, or just?
We honestly haven't talked about that.
I'd say probably not, I mean, maybe, but not necessarily. We might notify them that we did report it, but we wouldn't, we wouldn't notify them necessarily beforehand. We have to think about that, though, and make a judgment call, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of it.
There's very few cases where we have to do that.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of it in comparison to a DCF case where you have to notify someone that you've made a report. It might just be helpful so that they don't receive a random phone call from police of, FYI, this happened to Johnny at school.
Right.
Right.
That could be a little overwhelming.
That's a good point.
Yeah, good point.
Anybody else? Are you drinking town water? Because we just got a boil.
I know. I was like sitting here thinking, like, should I go dump it out? We just, everybody got a code red boil water notice from the town of North Auburn.
Oh, no.
So that's why everybody's filtering.
There's filtered water. I have bottles in my office. By the way, this was not part of my report. I'm just gonna talk about the MSBA project, but we just referenced SROs. We get great news a week or two ago, but we are gonna get a second SRO starting this school year, which is just phenomenal news. It's taken some time to not only secure the funding, but for the chief to identify and train officers to become SROs, but we're thrilled. So starting in September, we'll have two. Probably gonna be housed, probably housed at the middle school primarily, and then we have one at the high school, but it's really, it's huge news. So thanks to Chief McQuaid for his commitment to making that happen. I think it's great. So just.
Just one quick thing on that, John. They're so good at that concept of community policing. I literally just got a text a couple of weeks ago from a parent who said, hey, my kid was at the high school 10 o'clock at night playing basketball, and one of the officers pulled up, started shooting with them, spent a half an hour playing basketball with them. So I forwarded it to the chief just to say, good job. But they're so good at that, and I think it makes a huge difference.
Yeah, that's a great point. Yeah, they're great. We have a, we have a great, great crew. So just a quick update on the high school building project. It's been a really busy summer. Keith, Keith is on the building committee, has his Ethan, he can attest to that. We put a lot of, a lot of hours into this project this summer. I just want to give you just a quick, quick status. We hit a big milestone at the end of June, and we submitted this document right here, which is called the PDP, the Preliminary Development Program. And we're currently awaiting comments from the MSBA. We haven't heard back from them. But getting to this point was a really both exciting but also monumental step. I think Keith would attest in the process. This is available if people want to review it, but the PDP includes several different categories. I'll quiz you later. But there was, there was an existing condition assessment, right? So it kind of looked at our current site and looked at kind of the deficiencies. We, there's a big visioning and educational planning component. We talked a lot about that at past meetings, but we did a, you know, multi-phase, multi-month visioning process with the, with the designer's consultant, and that translated ultimately into an educational plan that Michelle and the curriculum and instructional leaders worked on. And it is, number one, they did phenomenal work, but it really outlines how we want to deliver our educational program for the next one, two, three, four, five, five decades. And it, that's a critical step in the process because the MSBA will not allow us to build a building, or renovate a building, that doesn't meet that educational plan, right? So that, that step was huge. And I think you've all seen that. We did a presentation on it in June, but that was a big part of our PDP, so we, again, we haven't gotten feedback yet, but we did hear at least from our designers and project manager that they thought ours was really, really exceptional, and they've seen dozens upon dozens. So I felt, I felt good about that. The PDP also includes a space summary, and it's, the space summary is really an anticlimactic document. It's a spreadsheet, right? And it goes room by room, square foot by square foot, and lays out all the space we need to deliver our educational program. Did I say that? Is that a fair description of that? The development of that space summary took.
It's tedious.
I mean, I'm not exaggerating, dozens upon dozens of hours, hundreds, maybe thousands of man-hours to get to it. And that is critical, it's a critical component of our PDP and ultimately then our next document, because the MSBA is going to approve only a certain amount of square footage, right? There are limitations and guidelines that we have to follow. And also, every square foot costs money. And so to have that space summary and the educational plan be the most efficient and accurate was perhaps the most important step we've taken, you know, to date. So that, that's in there. But again, it's anticlimactic, it's a spreadsheet, and you just can't see the amount of work that went into it. It was really, it was really intense. We also talked about, we also looked at the site, and you all know this, I think, by now, but we analyzed several town-owned sites to see if it could house a new building. We ultimately settled on the existing school property, which is, which is really nice, because we're gonna, it's gonna remain kind of a campus, the middle school, high school campus, and it was the most logical and, and most logical and doable site that we found. And then we really laid out the preliminary, a preliminary set of options, right? And so in the PDP, we laid out three different options. One was really just kind of a base repair and renovation option. It's sort of just like fix things that are broken, get, you know, get some things up to code. That's not really a great option for a lot of different reasons. We looked at an addition renovation option, which was, the designers did an unbelievable job laying, I don't even know how they, how they visioned this and how they developed it. So we have the base, base repair and renovation, we have an addition renovation, and then we have two new billing options, at least in the PDP. One was a two-story option, and one was a three-story option. That's really the main difference. There are some obviously differences, but that's really the main difference. I'll stop there for a moment. So that, that was the PDP. Again, that's what, six, seven months of work that went into this, waiting to hear back from them. The next milestone is something called the PSR, which is the Preferred Schematic Report. And that's gonna be due to MSBA. We're anticipating submitting that at the end of October. And that's a, that's a really critical step in our process, because that's, I'm gonna just cut to the chase on this, that's when we basically identify to MSBA and to our community what our preferred option is. And that is the project that we ultimately take to the voters in June. So the tricky part is that it's August 12th, right? Now, we've been working on this straight, straight through the summer, and we did a lot of work up to the end of school, but that October 20th. But that October 24th deadline is going to come really fast. And obviously, making that decision about what, what that preferred option is, is a big one. I want to point out, as I'm saying this, that we are also probably going to add a, one more option when we submit the PSR. The reason is, we like some of the elements of the two-story option. And so what we're looking at now is taking, taking that two-story option and the things we like about it, and converting that to a three-story option. For a lot of reasons, a three-story building makes sense on that site. It's really a landlocked site. It's, it's pretty tight. And it's kind of more efficient to build in a lot of ways. So we're looking to see if we can take what we love about the two-story option and create one more option that, that takes those elements and converts it to a three-story. So stay tuned on that. We haven't even seen that yet. The designers are, designers are working on that. So the PSR will kind of further refine those options, including that one I just mentioned. We're digging really deep into a site review and looking at potential, looking at traffic, traffic flow and safety, and look at potentially building new access roads. For, I'll just give you one example. We're trying to see if we can build a completely separate entrance to the high school. And so you have a separate dedicated entrance to high school, and then obviously a separate dedicated entrance to the middle school. We're working through that. We're not sure yet what we can accomplish. But that'll, we're working on that right now, and that'll ultimately end up in the Preferred Schematic Report. We're obviously currently analyzing those options. And then, very importantly, we're putting a pretty robust evaluation process in place to evaluate these options that I just talked about. So that work is going to be done. We have a, we have a kind of subset of the building committee, just, we call it the working, working group. We meet, we meet weekly, sometimes even, even more if needed. So that, I think the core of that evaluation of all the options will happen with the working group in collaboration with the designer and project manager. But ultimately, that evaluation process kicks up to the building committee, who ultimately will have to vote on, on that preferred option. So as of, losing track of the time a little bit, but as of last week, I think we have our evaluation matrix ready to go. So that process will probably happen end of August, early September, right? Am I right on that?
Yeah.
So that's, that's obviously a big step. And I just want to say, School Building Committee has met a couple of times throughout the summer. September's going to be a really busy month, for all those reasons I just mentioned, that we're coming to a deadline really fast. The School Building Committee will meet at least twice in September. We'll have at least one community forum in September. And I would just put a pitch out to anybody listening, including the school committee, that this is probably the time to really start paying attention. And if people want to attend the School Building Committee meetings or watch it, you know, watch the recordings, this is the time. Because we're making a decision by October about what project we're taking to the voters. And this is going to be, you know, a significant investment that we're asking the community to make. So this is really the time to kind of start paying attention. So really exciting work. It's been a really busy summer. I'm personally very happy with the, the team. Our designers, Jordan, Woody, are unbelievable. Our project manager's been fabulous. That's a good team. And then our working group and the School Building Committee and the curriculum instructional leaders have given up a lot of their summer working on the space summary and the educational plan. So credit to them. We'll celebrate them at some point. But I'll stop there. Michelle, Keith, any, you're involved, you guys too, you're all.
I was just going to echo where you kind of wrapped up there. The, the amount of, I've never been through a process, this process before. And I had no idea, really, honestly, how much work went into it. I just thought like some architect, like kind of when you do like a renovation of your house or something, like they come up with a few designs, they show them to you, and then you, like, oh, I like that one, right? And it's not like that, like literally at all. So I feel like if people, for you guys for sure, but the community members, I can say definitively that there aren't questions that haven't been asked. Like every single part of this project has been, like, literally pulled apart. Every, every square foot, like John said, has been scrutinized. And the, the CILs, the curriculum instructional leaders, and some others, like Ernie has put a ton of time into this. But the CILs in particular, they, they literally spent, I don't know, 20, 30, maybe 40 hours going through all the work that had been done on the instructional plan, and then taking that and going through the translation of that to the physical building that's being imagined, what, you know, renovation or addition, or new. They're like, they're applying that instructional plan to that. And I was in a session a few weeks ago where there, we're literally like walking around the high school, trying to find a room that was exactly, whatever it was, 800 square feet. So that you could like imagine, okay, there's 20 kids in this room, there's storage cabinets. Does this work? What does 50 more feet do? What does 50 less feet do? What's the cost consequence of that? What, what if, what if we make the room smaller, but then we have to like invest in storage in other places, right? And like every single one of those consequences. And what, as a voter, right, one of the things I was really impressed with is how focused the CILs, like you would assume, right, that they just want the best education, right? Like that would be my like walk-in assumption, that they would be like, okay, how do we make this as great for education as possible, without like a real financial element to it? But they haven't been that way at all. Like they're literally scrutinizing. We had this, there's this one performance space that has had just, I mean, countless conversations about it, because I think there's a lot of momentum for the value of that space. But it's like, okay, well, how do we actually make sure we're using that space 70, 80, 90% of the time? We're not building something that's going to get used every once in a while. And the CILs are like driving that conversation. And I've just been really, really, really impressed with that. So that was the only thing I really wanted to add, John, is like, I think if, if you're out there in the community, I know how this is going to go, right? We're going to land on an option, and then like people will be like, oh, those guys are so stupid. They didn't think of this. They didn't think of that. Like, really, like, all of the trade-offs have been like poured over. And I think wherever we land, and it's still, I think it's still a little bit of a coin toss between some of the options. But wherever we land in October, it's going to be like a really well-thought-out proposal. Like, I'm excited as a collective to take it to the voters, because I think it says a lot about where we think education's going in the future. And, you know, it's like, you know, these, these high schools get invested in once every 50-ish years. And, you know, this is our, our time to sort of put a mark on what the next generation of students, you know, whether you're a senior and you're thinking about your grandchildren, or whether you're a new parent and you're looking down the road. It's a really exciting time, and I know that the outcome, the output is going to be really exciting.
Well said.
Yeah.
Any more?
Thank you.
So we'll move on to school committee members, community announcements. Charlie?
Yeah, I'm excited to be back, excited for the year upcoming here. I'm also, I had a really great meeting regarding school security with
Oh, yes.
the former police chief, John Riley, who's doing some work to help us kind of update policy and, and procedure. And a lot of the things that were discussed, you know, we're still in the early stages. I think reports are still being made. But I was really enthused to hear how we're kind of taking a forward-facing district-wide approach that will kind of standardize and make some universal procedures there. Security and safety at different school sites are always going to be slightly different based on the building and the, you know, the elements that are kind of variables. But thinking about it from a big picture and kind of standardizing processes, it's not unlike some of the bullying things that we talked about, updating and really getting everyone on the same page so that things aren't lost in translation, especially in safety and security, where you, people are making decisions, split-second decisions, because they're not 100% certain of what to do. So I had a really good meeting with them. I was grateful for that opportunity. And I know, I know more will be coming on that.
Yeah, just, let me just add to that, just in case people don't know about the town. This has been in the works for probably a year and a half, maybe even more, but the town had issued an RFP for, to hire a consultant to come in and do this type of work, have emergency planning and training and collaboration between schools, police, and fire, and obviously other town, town departments. But we ended up hiring the Windmill Group, who is known, has done some work in this town in the past. And they're, they're just pros, pros. I mean, they're just exceptional. And former police chief John Riley is working for the Windmill Group right now. And so he's kind of leading part of the, part of the planning. And so he had conducted a whole series of meetings with a lot of school staff. And Charlie represented you at the school committee level. But we have, we're hoping to roll out, they have a draft plan right now. We met with him today, actually. Boy, roll that out sometime in the fall. That's more of an internal document, but just, we're really happy about that work. And again, Charlie said, it was time, it was time to update that as well. A lot, a lot has changed in the world, so we're thrilled about that. And then long-term, you know, we'll, we'll continue with our, you know, our training. And then ultimately, I think there'll be some, how do I say it, inter-agency training, active shooter simulations, crisis response simulations. And I'm not, that's more police and fire working with us, but that's sort of phase two, phase three, so.
And we talked about it in the meeting, but when I, when I met with John, but, you know, we talk a lot with good reason about shooters and thinking about that forefront. I work at a university. It's on my mind every single day. You know, however, there are also a litany of other things that can go wrong that need to be prepared for, too. So some of the things that were kind of just broadly discussed, I was really impressed with the range and the kind of foresight and thought on a lot of these things and how it'll be. Hopefully, you know, none of this ever comes to be needed, but, but it feels like we'll be prepared.
One of the things that's going to come out of this planning, too, is their list of recommended capital improvements, which I think will be very helpful. They're going to literally say, here's what we think you need. Now, I can't do everything all in, in one year, but that's going to be, that's going to really help us, I think, as we start trying to. But again, not just schools, police and fire as well. Go get, go get some funding from the town, because we do have some deficiencies. I mean, stating the obvious, you know, we have older buildings, but that'll, that'll help, too. So they're doing, they're doing fabulous job, you know, soup to nuts. Thanks, John, for doing that.
Absolutely.
Just want to wish everybody a good first day and the next couple of weeks. I just also wanted to mention CPAC will be back. Check our Facebook page for upcoming dates. We'll probably do another info session on the new IEP format, since all the IEPs will get turned over into that new format this year. And just continue to follow us. And then my last piece was, if you, you know, are curious about our school calendar, when we start school, when the open houses are those, I'm assuming it's on the school website.
Yes, and it's also, all of the open houses are on the school calendar. It's posted at the bottom.
Coming up, September will be fast. It'll be here before we know it.
So just want to remind everybody, August 27th is Welcome Back Day for staff. So I'm going to be with, I believe with Michelle and John that morning at the Welcome Back breakfast type thing at the, at the middle school. There are two things going on on the 20th that I wasn't sure if anybody on school committee would like to go to. I'm not able to on the 20th, but one is at 9:00 in the morning and one's at 12:15. So just shoot me an email if you want to do either one. One is sort of breakfasty and the other one's sort of lunch. But that's for the, the new staff on the 20th.
I thought you were going to bury the lead there. It's not just breakfast, lunch, actually.
I got, I got invited to a luncheon. That's all I saw.
You're all going to be getting invited to luncheon.
Luncheon at one says coffee.
Leadership team, all new staff members, and anyone that is available from the school committee. You'll all be invited to that. I hope to send that invite out tomorrow to you. But if there is someone who wants to come in the morning and just welcome the new people at the beginning of their first day, you're more than welcome to do that as well.
So if anybody wants to do that, reach out to me, Michelle, somebody, just so that we can have some people there. That'd be great. And welcome back, everybody.
What, what time is the morning?
The morning one coffee is at 8:45, and then the group starts at 9:00. And then the luncheon is around 12:15.
If anybody was curious, could they just sit, anybody from school committee, I mean, not just the public, but could they sit through any of that? I'm just out of curiosity.
Yeah. We'll be at the high school this year instead of the middle school. We've typically done at the middle school for that. So it's openly set up in the high school media center this year.
Great, thank you.
Thank you to all of our summer workers, I guess I'll call them, everyone doing committee work and things of that nature. It sounds like a lot's been going on, so kudos to those people. I hope everyone's had a good summer. We'll enjoy the last few weeks. And welcome to our new staff and obviously our new students and returning students. Good luck this year. Hard to believe I have a senior this year and a junior. That's making me feel really old, but I'll get over that. Good luck to our fall athletes and anyone else participating in some type of extracurricular activity.
Great. I just had one thing related to the first day of school. John, I got your note about the first day of school raffle. So I wanted to just, two things, draw attention to it for anybody who might be watching the meeting. So the administration organizes a, a set of raffles, basically, so that when the teachers come back, they can enjoy perks and prizes donated by local businesses and organizations. I think, I think that's a nice touch. And I actually had, had an idea. I was going to flip by you guys when, when I was on the Board of Selectment. We used to do this pretty frequently. Like if something like this is going on, we would just sort of informally pool our, pool our resources and like make a, make a donation on behalf of the school committee. So I'm happy to take point on that. I was thinking, you know, if each of us put in 20 bucks or something, we could put together like, I was thinking, like a SPAG gift certificate or something like that. Put it in, so. Maybe I'll just shoot a note afterwards to you guys, if you want. I can take point on, on putting it together for us.
Thanks.
Thanks for that advertisement, Keith. It's just a funny little tradition. I've done it my whole career and sort of brought it here. And it's just, I don't know, it's just, just fun. It just kind of lightens, it lightens the mood. And it's, I will say, too, it's, I mean, people love winning prizes, right? But it actually really is good for local businesses, I say. I mean, because we have 650 employees and opportunity to just get their, their name out, too. So if anybody, I put an email out the other day, but if anybody wants to donate, just reach out to me directly or through you. Just let me know. I'd be glad to make some, make some calls, but just a fun little thing we do.
Great. All right, so we'll move on to the action items. The first is approval for bills dated June 13th, 20th, 27th, July 1st. I don't know if it's 18th or 12th. There's a typo.
It's 11, 18, and 25.
25. So July 11th, 18th, and 25th, and August 1st of 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Throw a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? So 5-0, it carries. And the next would be a motion to approve the minutes dated June 12th of 2024. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold, abstained. Any nays? All right, 4-0 on one, carries. Next, we'll move on to other issues requiring a vote. The first is a vote to approve Assistant Superintendent Michelle McEwen's 2024 to 2027 contract. Do you have to discuss that at all?
No.
We all know what it is.
Yeah, well, I mean, I think, I think it's, I think I'll say, because I, this is just a, an extension of our Assistant Superintendent's contract. We're thrilled that she's coming back for another tour. She's an all-star, and I'm happy, I'm happy she's staying, but this, yeah, the school committee, this requires a vote of the school committee.
So I'll be looking for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I am going to abstain.
I'm going to abstain.
All right, so we have three out of seven, so I think we have to re-vote that next time.
I think it's a quorum issue.
Yeah, well, we have a quorum, but we don't have a vote.
To the vote, though.
Right. So I think we have to re-vote it next time. We have two extensions. Next would be a vote to approve North Attleboro Administrators Association 2024 to 2027 contract.
Yeah, that's, we have a little, I don't even know if it's really officially a collective bargaining unit, but we have an administrative association contract. There's actually, there's actually no changes, right, to that, that contract? So it's just an extension, three-year extension.
Any discussion? Sorry, I need a motion first.
So moved.
Have a second? Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or extensions? So that carries 5-0. Next would be a vote to suspend policy KF-R1. Was Patrick coming?
Yeah, that works, yes, if I'd cover it.
All right, so I'll just finish reading the title. Vote to suspend policy KF-R1 North Attleboro Public Schools Facilities Use Agreement for an upcoming North Attleboro High School Alumni Association Awards Event to be held in early 2025.
Yes, I can give the committee the background, and you can obviously chime in, John.
Yeah, go ahead, yeah.
And just for the record, I'm a board member of the North Attleboro High School Alumni Association as well. The Alumni Association basically exists to support programs at the high school. high school and build a sense of community among alumni. We've been, you know, really pretty active now for pushing 20 years. And part of what we do is a recognition event where we recognize, I sent you guys kind of the whole write-up, or John forwarded it for me. But we recognize alumni, community members, staff. And just this past year, we expanded it from being high school only to being the entire school district, with the logic being that when you graduate from North Attleboro High School, like, you don't, you don't think of it as a discreet experience in high school, like you really think of your entire high school experience. So, especially with the faculty, we wanted to be able to recognize at all levels. So, we had, last year, we made a big change to our program and collaborated with John and Michelle and Peter Haveland. And we held the event at the high school last year in the lobby. It was perfect. I mean, it was perfect. It was really well-attended, and the presentations went really well. The, we used the lobby, like, you know, I'm an alumni, obviously, and I've never seen the lobby look like that. It was really, really special. So, we'd like to do it again this year. And there's a School Committee policy that prohibits the sale of alcohol on school rounds, rightfully so. And, yeah, basically, this is a request to suspend that policy for one day, which allows us to have the event. Part of our process, basically, is, once we have the School Committee's approval, we then go to, there's a town process that has to be followed. It's really rigorous and involves us putting together security plans, et cetera, police, fire, DPW, like, everybody's involved. Honestly, a really well-run process, though. I think it makes sure that it's all buttoned up. And like I said, from, the event itself was amazing, but the alcohol piece of it was really, really well-managed. I mean, we weren't even close to an issue. It was, it was appropriate and secure, and we got a lot of really positive feedback. In fact, I talked it through with Tony Maribito, the Assistant Town Manager, afterwards. And, you know, he just gave, kind of gave us a lot of credit for how we went through the process and orchestrated the event. So, John, I don't know if you would add anything?
I would just say it was an unbelievable event. And so glad we're doing it again. But as it relates to this policy, serving alcohol was just a non-issue. I mean, it was just a really first-class event. And I fully support the suspension of the policy for another year. We're really, really excited and just felt the momentum and the excitement, I think, is only building around that. So, that's all I'll say.
All right. So, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nothing.
I just want to say I went, and I thought it was great.
Yeah, who was?
Yeah.
Two of my favorite teachers were. Ooh-ha. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any nays or abstentions?
I'm not sure if I need to abstain, but I just will.
Okay.
Yeah, that's fine. Great. So, that carries 4-0 and 1. We have a discussion section.
I can't even talk. Discussion section, which I don't know why that's on there. It's just a general discussion.
I just, it was a header, I think.
Public comments or questions? Yeah, go ahead. If you want to step up, just grab a microphone where we'd like to, otherwise, we can't hear you.
We can hear you. The TV can hear you.
So, the anti-bullying program looks really good. So, I do appreciate moving that way for parents to report things and students. So, we had an issue in the spring, and this is what I want, my question is, assurances for staff members following protocol, because she reported something to a staff member and he blew it off and just told her, oh, it's just because they like you. So, we had to escalate it. I got involved and we escalated it. So, I just want to know, on that side of things, like, are they going to be following things as well? And like, what, I'm looking for some comfort that the staff members will be following along, too.
I'm glad you asked that. I didn't want to go so deep into all the different pieces that we planned. One of the things, our leadership retreat is tomorrow, and one of the things on our agenda is to create a Welcome Back Agenda for teachers and all staff members for the first day of school. We do a one-hour training session where we make sure we inform all staff members that they're mandated reporters. For instance, we tell them who is safety care-trained in the building. We tell them procedures for making sure every student gets safely on a bus. Like, there's just kind of a laundry list. We've added a specific component to that for every principal to review the bully prevention and intervention plan in-depth with the staff members at their schools, and then specifically to go over the reporting procedures. That way, we can hold everyone accountable. We purposely wrote in that any staff member who gets a report, even if it's verbal, has to put it into that incident reporting form that I spoke about. That's now going to be that online form that goes directly to the principal. But certainly, if anything like that ever happens, and we're really doing everything we can to put safety measures in place, please let the building principal know, or any one of us, and we can follow up. I totally understand it's really, we have to take all of these issues seriously, and that's our message for every staff member that's in our district this year. I think it's really important.
Because she was trying to do the right thing.
Of course. I appreciate that.
And so, we had to escalate it. So, I just, and I know that this, other things haven't always felt as
Yeah.
well-received as you would hope.
Okay.
Other teachers, you know, most of the teachers are great. It was just one, but I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. If there's anything, there's always that building chain of command, that if something's going on in a specific building, always call the building principal. Don't be afraid to do that. But in the meantime, we're putting as many measures in place as we can beforehand.
Great.
Thank you. Appreciate your feedback. And if you read the plan and have other feedback, definitely send it our way.
I just want to add too, I commend you for speaking up to your teacher. That's who we want, students. So, I apologize that that person didn't follow through, but thank you for reaching out to your adult.
Yeah.
Thank you. So, we're going to go back to the vote for Michelle, just so we don't have to wait until September. Ethan's going to log on.
Well, I forgot that there was a link to the meeting and
Ethan and David were both trying to get it.
Tried to log on.
Sending my message.
And so, I really, I really apologize. Just give me a second, if you don't mind.
Sure. I don't have a report, so I don't know what you guys want to talk about. How was Saratoga?
We're on camera, so I'm not sure if I can talk about my camera.
Did you have a life outside of it?
No, it was wonderful. It's the best place on earth. I love it.
I'm actually curious. I was starting to look at it, what Robert's Rules actually are
Yeah.
related to a quorum and abstentions.
Yep.
Just announcing we're going to recess for a much longer
All right. So, we're going to go into recess in about 10 minutes, four or 10 minutes.
Not even yet.
So, we were able to connect with Ethan Hamilton. He and David Che were both trying to get on virtually, and we were able to get Ethan on. So, we're going to retake that vote for Michelle McEwen. I did just look at Robert's Rules of Order. And so, we had a 3-0 and 2 vote. Under Robert's Rules, the 3 is considered not a quorum, obviously, because it's not 4. And the 2 abstaining votes are like, we're not even here. So, it's really just 3 out of 7. So, it's a non-vote. So, we're going to re-vote now that Ethan is present. So, if I could start with a motion for a vote to approve Assistant Superintendent Michelle McEwen's 2024 to 2027 contract, I'd be looking for a motion on that.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? No? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any nays? And any abstentions? And I'm an abstention, too. So, it carries 4-0 and 2. Thank you, Ethan.
Sorry, Ethan.
Congratulations, Michelle.
Thank you.
All right, great. And then, I think we're adjourned after that, unless anybody's got anything I missed.
Thank you. Welcome back, everybody.
Motion to adjourn. I move that we adjourn?
Yeah, sure. Anybody want a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion? All, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Great. We're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Ethan, thank you.